Okay, it is 5:30, so I'd like to call the St. Joseph's School District Board of Education meeting to order, April 26, 2021. Board members, I'd like to call your attention to the top of the agenda for our board norms. The members of the St. Joseph's School Board will prepare for board meetings, thoroughly review all materials provided in preparation for all board meetings, listen to understand, use eye contact, do not interrupt the speaker, avoid sidebar conversations, and avoid the use of personal technology, engage in purposeful discussion, stay on topic, clearly and concisely share ideas, and avoid repeating comments already made by other board members, collaborate respectfully, consider all opinions, collaboratively engage to reach decisions as a whole board, and believe that all are working for the best interests of the SJSD students, staff, and community. Make evidence-based decisions, use representative and reliable data to make decisions that move the district forward in attaining its vision, mission, and priorities, and demonstrate professional and ethical governance. Use discussion and voting to communicate individual viewpoints and demonstrate acceptance of board decisions through words and actions. Donna, could you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Ms. Pasley?
Here.
Dr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Ms. Witham?
Here.
Would you stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Recognitions. Dr. Van Zyl?
Actually, we have got several going on in Jill Huntsman's from the technical center coming forward. So with that, she's going to bring some other folks up on too, I think.
Students, if you guys want to come on up to the front, I have just a few things to say. You can just stand right here. So first of all, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Jill Huntsman, and I am the Director at Hilliard Technical Center. It is my honor this evening to recognize several students that have excelled in Skills USA. And so I would like to just briefly tell you a little bit about Skills USA. It is a national career and technical student organization that partners students, teachers, and industry representatives to ensure America has a skilled workforce. The mission of Skills USA is to empower its members to become world-class workers, leaders, and responsible American citizens. At Hilliard Technical Center, embedded within our curriculum, is an applied method of instruction preparing high-performance workers in public career and technical programs while providing quality education experiences for students in leadership, teamwork, citizenship, and character development. This past February, students competed in district leadership and skills conferences with students from six other CTE centers in our Northwest District. Those placing at districts were able to compete at the state level in April against CTE students all across Missouri. This competition was virtual, which added a whole other dynamic to the competition. Students who placed first at the state level are now eligible to compete against CTE students from across the United States in June. Several HTC students competed in areas such as computer-aided drafting, computer services, emergency medical technician, and firefighting. These contests put students in real-life, work-based situations that require them to use the skills and knowledge received in the classrooms and labs at HTC. HTC students earned a total of 80 medals through their dedication and also the dedication of teachers. The following students received first place at the Missouri State Skills USA competition and will now compete in June at the national level. I would like to recognize this evening: Marissa Foster in EMT, give a little wave for Marissa there. Callie Justice, also EMT. Kason Hallers in firefighting was not able to be with us this evening. William Shrek, information technology, and last but not least, Matthew Laxson in computer-aided drafting technology. So I would just like to say a extreme congratulations to you guys. It took a lot of work, a lot of learning on your teacher's part, too, as far as the virtual component, and now we get to do it all again in June for Nationals, right? Okay, all right. Congratulations. So the teachers that are here with us this evening from Hilliard Tech Center are our lead Skills USA advisors, which are Mr. Brian Weed, who teaches carpentry, and Mr. Patrick Graham, who teaches automobile service technology. We also have our computer-aided drafting technology teacher, Mr. Roger Maple, and also our emergency medical technician teacher instructor Becky Mercer.
And Cochrane.
And Cochrane. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations to our students, and thank you very much to our instructors, our teachers. That's awesome. Okay, Missouri All-State Jazz Band, All-State Band?
Lenae is here.
Lenae?
Hi. Hi, everybody. My name is Lenae Woodin. I am the Director of Bands at Central High School. It's great to be here with you tonight. Wish my kids could have been here, too. But tonight I wanted to celebrate the successes we have of six of our high school band students making the All-State Band or Jazz Band. Back in December, we had many of our students, I think we had about 40 of our high school students audition for the Northwest Missouri Music Educators Association All-District Band, and we had many students make that ensemble. And by making it into that ensemble, that gave them the opportunity to audition for the Missouri All-State Band. This is an ensemble that is made up of students from every corner of the state. Everybody has the opportunity to audition for it, and very few make this ensemble. We're lucky if we, really any school's lucky if they can get even one kid into this ensemble. And so the fact that we have six kids in this ensemble this year is just a huge accomplishment. This is something I always dreamt of making it into when I was in school, never got to. So I make sure these kids know just how extraordinary they are. But we had five students make the All-State Band, and one student made the All-State Jazz Band. I want to say their names, and if you know them, give them a huge high five or air five when you see them. Mary Monik is a senior. She made the fourth-chair flute position. This is her second year being in the All-State Band. She, that's a huge accomplishment, and so we're very proud of her. Anna Davis is a junior in our program. She also made it into the flute section. We had two clarinets make the All-State Band, Chloe Crooks is a sophomore. And so that's super exciting for her. And Georgia Riley is a senior. We had Isaac Rivera in the percussion section. That's a really tough section to make it in. They only take about six people. So all of these, very, very low numbers, very high audition numbers. And then Hendrix Kamara made it into the Missouri All-State Jazz Band as the lead alto player, making him the best alto saxophonist, jazz saxophonist in the state. And that is his second year getting to be in that position. So we are just ecstatic about their hard work that they have put in this year. It's been really hard knowing that you're working towards all of this. Usually they get to have a performance in January at our state music convention, and that was never even an option this year. And so the fact that these kids still worked hard for this accomplishment, knowing that there wasn't ever going to get to be a performance in sight, just really speaks to their dedication to their craft, which, I mean, just makes me over the moon about it because, you know, when you see your students living through their passions, that just makes you so happy. So those are our six kids that we had. We are really lucky to have such a tight team at Central, and so I know that a lot of these accomplishments are definitely assisted through my coworkers, Chad McCott and Alex Castleman. We're really lucky to get to work together and work with these kids. So thank you for recognizing them and their accomplishments.
Congratulations to these students and also to their instructors and teachers. Thank
you so much. Audience participation, do we have any other participation, Donna? Not seeing any. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore made the motion, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And Mr. Foster seconded, and call for the vote.
Where are we voting on?
The approval of the agenda.
The entire agenda or the consent agenda?
No, the entire.
The entire agenda as printed. And I will just remind especially our new board members, once you hit your vote, then you also have to go to the right bottom and hit Record My Vote, and that's when it actually records it. So just as a reminder this first night of voting electronically.
He should be able to, yeah.
Mine doesn't come up.
Yours didn't come up. How do you vote, Mr. Foster?
Yes.
I still do not have a vote for Mr. Reader or from Ms. Williams.
But I also vote yes.
Okay. Mr. Reader, how do you vote?
I did vote, yes.
It's not popular.
Is it recorded?
No. Hit the record right there.
Okay.
That's weird.
Yes, sir.
Now they're all there.
I didn't record.
And I'll remind you this evening, as we place votes, to hit that Record Your Vote because that takes a little practice.
Yeah, this just takes.
Okay, and all seven came up, and the motion is approved 7-0. Moving on to consent agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Mrs. Witham made the motion, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And we'll see, and we'll wait till. Okay, and before I announce the vote, I do want to have a point of clarification for the March 29 Board of Education meeting minutes. There was a KQ2 news media that was put out on the night of our reorganization meeting, which was the 19th of April. And in that story, it was noted that the repurposing of Lake Elementary School for our new early learning center, preschool center, would be about $1 million. But as you notice in our March 29 board meetings where we voted on that, the actual price is $312,000, of which $300,000 of that is going to be covered by federal funds. Also, to a point of clarification that that was voted on, and that center will open in the fall for the '21-'22 school year, as I know there was some confusion on that. Now, mine didn't come up.
Yours didn't come up. I'm going to restart the voting.
Donna's going to restart the voting. We're going to vote again for the consent agenda. And again, don't forget to hit Record My Vote after you choose your vote.
Did it pop up this time? Okay. It's still not recording. Kenneth, did yours come up? Latonya, did yours?
No, mine didn't come up.
Okay. How do you vote, Latonya?
I vote yes.
You're voting on the consent agenda. Mr. Foster, how do you vote?
Yes, mine came up now, so I'm going to try to.
Ah, there. Yep, it is there now. Thank you.
Okay, and motion passes 7-0. Moving on to administrative reports. Dr. Van Zyl with the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just a couple of things this evening that I wanted to share with you. First of all, in the consent agenda, you approved the graduation changes, so make sure you take note of that. If you are interested in attending those graduation events, if you would let Donna know so that we could let the high school administrators know. We aren't necessarily having you on the stage, but if you're going to be there, they could recognize you from the audience, from the stage, saying, hey, we've got a couple of board members with us. So if that is something you're interested in, please let Donna know, and she can share that with the administrators. Couple of other things for you is that I wanted to remind everybody that enrollment for next year is taking place. We need folks to continue to enroll and make sure that we get an accurate number of folks that are going to show up in our schools next year. So if you know people, please encourage them. Ask them if you're enrolled. If they haven't, ask them to make sure they get enrolled. We also have enrollment for summer school taking place as well. And so if folks are interested in being in summer school, we'll talk about that later on in the agenda, but wanted to take this moment to remind you about that as well. Also, I was asked a question in regard to the number of staff members that have been vaccinated. Please know that we can't ask individuals because that's a HIPAA violation, but we did send out a survey anonymously. We had about 884 people responded. We do have 615 of our folks that have completed their full vaccination. Forty-five have started it, and there's about 198 that have said they don't really have plans at this time to get vaccinated. So in case you're wondering where we are in that. And then also, you will see that tomorrow, there will be an email going out to all of our staff. I know that the board extended some invitations to folks from the community to be on some committees. There'll be an email going out to our entire staff asking if they would be interested. It kind of explains the process. You'll get a copy of that as well, so I didn't want you to be surprised when that rolls out because there will be a committee of staff that will be involved in conversations about facilities. And then my last point is, there are 23 days of school left. So who would have thought we'd get down into the 20s because it seems like we would go on to school forever and dealing with the issues that have been out there related to COVID. So this has been a long school year, but our staff and students and our families, I think, have done an excellent job trying to manage everything that's out there. So 27 days or 23 days to the end of the year. And with that, any questions for me?
I have one. It's a request, and I, this is born out of my personal experience for next year graduation. If it's going to be different, and we need a change, can we have that earlier in the year? Because people do make plans based on the published board-approved calendar.
I don't believe the date has changed of graduation. I think it's just the process of graduation that has changed. The date should be the same. But we were hoping that maybe everything would be able to run its course, but where we are, we just felt like we also needed to have these plans in place to be able to. Yes, absolutely. We will try to notify people.
And that's fine, and I know that, like I said, that request comes from my personal experience the year my son graduated, and we had to move a $20,000 vacation because of a last-minute change in graduation. So people do make plans based on that board-approved agenda, so.
Yeah, absolutely, we do. And just so I'd always remind people, there could be unforeseen circumstances, like if we were at the convention center and for some reason they had a construction and we had to move. You know, some of those things are in control, but I understand what you're saying, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Reader?
Yes, I'm not sure if I'm going to bring this up, but it's on graduation. And several people, of course, makes sense I'm on the board now, and I was kind of disappointed and shocked the way we were handling this, and I don't know what the rule is. But anyhow, my understanding at Lafayette, you could bring your date, whether it came from another school, was another year, and all that kind of stuff. Yet at Central, their graduation is being limited to who they can bring.
Are you talking about graduation?
Graduation or prom?
Prom, I'm talking about prom. Sorry. It says along the line, graduation, things that only happen once in their lifetime, and it seems like it's been a real negative effect.
I believe, and Mr. Nolte, correct me if I'm wrong, that they're consistent in what they're doing, are they not?
Yeah, they're only allowing juniors and seniors, and just because, I mean, and part of it is because of a limited amount with COVID and with everything going on. We did decide to allow outside guests, which we initially weren't going to, but we felt like that was safe enough. So we kept it pretty consistent with just juniors and seniors at all three schools, so.
And juniors and seniors can bring a date from the district?
Correct.
Outside of us, correct?
As long as they weren't over 20 years old, yes.
So I think that's taken care of. If that hasn't been clarified, I'll make sure, Mr. Nolte, insert that question, so we'll make sure administrators clarify that with everyone.
So all three schools are under the same rules?
Yeah.
Okay. And if, the rule is, if you're junior, senior at Central, and you want to bring a sophomore from Lafayette, you can't do it?
No, they have to be junior, senior, or they can be outside of school, so.
But they couldn't be a sophomore?
I don't think, and that's really, I left that up to the, that part of it and normal dance rules. Maybe there was a little variance there, but I did leave that up to discretion the way the high school normally does it. So I couldn't tell you whether sophomore or not, 19-year-old, I don't know that for sure, so I could find that out for you.
I just thought under the last two years where so many kids lost what they want to get to do once or twice, but this year, I wish I'd have known sooner that we should have just opened it up, and everybody come to want to be part of it with fewer restrictions.
The younger students would eventually have that opportunity. That's why we looked at it. The older students, if you're 19-years-old, you graduated last year, you didn't get that opportunity. That's why we decided to allow them to come in versus the younger ones. The younger ones will still have that opportunity in the following years, so.
Thank you very much, Professor.
No problem.
Okay, moving on to Assistant Superintendent's report. Dr. Williams?
Thank you. I have two items tonight. The first one is something that I included in my Friday update. It is People of All Colors Succeed Program, POAC. And I read a letter of support for the YWCA's Title II Grant application back in November. In April, I was notified that the YWCA received that Title II grant, including the funding for POAC. So on April 13, Jamie Grayson, the founder of POAC, as well as Leslie Stone, Lexi, who helps Jamie with POAC, and Rachel Kretzer, Tammy Killen from the YWNI, were able to have a planning call. Because of the tight timelines for the remainder of the year, we are going to begin deployment of POAC at Central High School. We have three training sessions scheduled, April 28, April 30, and May 14. We'll be training 96 students in Session 1. Session 2 is planned for the fall, and they will be reapplying for additional grant funding in September. And they need some data from Sessions 1 and 2 in order to reapply. They have every indication that the funding will be accepted based on the folks that they have spoken to, they being the YWCA. The goal of POAC is for the next generation to learn acceptance of others and engage in courageous conversations. And if you'll remember back to August, at our administrative retreat, courageous conversations was the focus. We really want to build understanding, open dialogue, and inclusion, and build healthier communities, and really brighter futures for all of our children. And I'm excited that POAC is coming. Jamie Grayson was an athlete at Missouri Western. He and his twin, Jason, Jason is very active in the community, were football players. His brother, Rodney Grayson, was a teaching colleague of mine at Lafayette High School. His late sister-in-law, Robin Grayson, was a longtime teacher at Lindbergh Elementary School. And his mother was a colleague of mine when I taught in Plattsburgh. So I'm excited that the work that Jamie is doing is coming to St. Joseph, and I'm excited that we will have the opportunity to expand it to other schools. In fact, I had a conversation with Bethany and one of our elementary principals about bringing it to one of our elementary schools in the coming year if the YW grant is expanded. I just really think that this is something that will help our students be ambassadors for recognizing likenesses more than differences, which is something that I think all of us would recognize builds a healthier community. So as the time comes closer, I will see if there are additional opportunities for some of us to be able to attend or at least get some footage so that we can preview some of that training. And Jamie mentioned that Carney Liberty High School, Lee Summit, and Park Hill have participated in POAC, and Liberty North is getting ready to have POAC training as well. So this is something that has some track record behind it and has some excitement. So any questions about POAC before I turn it over to the final item in my report, which is summer school enrollment?
I would like to.
Mr. Foster?
I guess I would like to see how it goes in the future and just kind of track it. I'd like to see some of the results and the success stories.
Sure, absolutely. And I put links to the website on the Friday update last week. If you wanted to access, it's POACsucceed.com or org, I cannot remember. But if you look in the Friday update, you can link to the website and see Jamie and also some of the testimonials from kids who have already been through the training.
All right. Good evening. I'm Bethany Clark. I'm the Director of Elementary Education, and I shared with you before a summer school enrollment form. Our goal is to get 3,000, about 3,800 students. You can see we have 2,085, so we're about 1,800 away from our mark. This is the first year in the district, so first of all, that I kind of was a little nervous that we weren't going to make it there. So I reached out to all the building leaders, and they assured me that we are above where we should be, and they're expecting a record year. So we're going to keep our fingers crossed that they're very optimistic about what our summer school's going to look like. On the left side, you will see that we have assigned, Mr. Nolte and I have assigned a site director for each building. This person is in charge of materials, scheduling, hiring. This person is in charge of materials, scheduling, hiring staff. They essentially run the building for summer school as an aspiring administrator in our district. You can kind of look through the numbers. We do have a little bit of a tracking issue in the sixth, seventh grade area. That's students moving from fifth to sixth or sixth to seventh, and they're going from an elementary to a middle school. Those numbers haven't quite rolled over nicely into Power School, and some of them are not sure which building they would go to or didn't indicate it on their form. So we're going to have to spend some time with the site directors cleaning that up before summer school starts. And then you'll notice under the zero tab, those would be kindergartners, incoming kindergartners. We have had kindergarten enrollment for about a month, so we've been really pushing that, but that doesn't mean that they've enrolled in Power School yet. So they might have their paper form, but we can't put them in the Power School system because they haven't been enrolled by their parent in Power School. So you'll see Oak Grove did a great job getting their parents all enrolled during kindergarten screening, some other schools didn't, so we're cleaning that up as well. And then I'll let Mr. Nolte talk about the secondary side.
Okay, I'm Shannon Dalton, the Director of Secondary Education. On the backside of that sheet, you have the high school course request. If you see on the front, the other side, about 241 students, and that's grades, that can be incoming grades nine through 12, can take the extended learning opportunities. Those are half-credit classes that have been, that have been developed by Virtual Academy, and they are already set to take virtually. So there's half-credit classes there for extended learning. They can take two of those up to one full credit. And then there's credit recovery, which is credit they would recover from previous, taking previous, that is only grades 10 through 12 incoming, because the incoming freshmen haven't taken any high school classes yet. So that's really, those represent grades 10, incoming 10 through 12, and the course enrollments of each one. We would like to have those made at 15 on the extended learning. We will probably do some groupings, for instance, like Black History, Psychology, Sociology would probably have the same certified teacher teaching it, so we could pull those together, and that teacher may teach two or three of those classes at one time. Now, when I say teach, they are facilitating and really just watching the students and making sure the students are progressing through the virtual, the online version that we have developed. So that just gives you an idea of where we're at right now with the high school. That does not include, we have not opened this up, really, I got my first request today from a private school here in town. So there will be private schools here in town that have the opportunity to enroll in this, as well as maybe an outside surrounding district high school. Maybe say Savannah or, probably not Savannah, they probably have their own, but like South Hole or something like that, smaller school that doesn't have summer school, we would allow them to come take credits here.
Any questions about summer school or comments?
I guess a couple of quick questions. You said the high school extended learning is predominantly virtually.
They're all virtual, yes.
The credit recovery is also?
They're all virtual as well, it's all online, yes. There'll be nobody, no students in the buildings taking classes. Teachers will report to buildings to facilitate those classes, but there'll be no, totally taking those online.
Okay. But the elementary and middle school is in-person?
Correct.
It's in-person with a virtual option for parents who want the virtual option.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. Clark, Mr. Nolte, Dr. Williams, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seven, Personnel and Finance Treasurers Report, A, Approval of Bills, Dr. Edgar.
Okay, in your package, you have a copy of the bills, and so at this, whoops, I guess I need to talk into the microphone, my bad. At this time, I would entertain any questions that you have in regards to any of the bills.
So we had bills in here?
Attached.
Just attached?
Yeah, just attached.
Okay, not seeing any, I would entertain a motion for approval of the bills as presented.
I move to approve the bills.
Thank you, Mrs. Witham, and a second?
All second.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore, so Mrs. Witham, motion, and Mr. Gilmore, second. Questions over the bills? Yes, Mr. Reader?
Where are the list of bills?
They're attached, that little paper clip next to approval of bills on your computer, if you click on that, the bills are attached to that. And just a reminder to our new members, those are attached when the agenda is posted, and then you have a couple of days to look through those. And if you have questions ahead of time, Dr. Edgar is always happy to answer those, but sometimes we don't get them ahead of time until, you're always welcome to answer or ask any questions here during the board meeting. Yes, Mr. Reader?
I meant to ask a question before the gentleman got off about summer school. And I was wondering, is there, we're concerned about the numbers, obviously, is that because, do we get some type of funding like we do for every student that's in class? Do we have some state or federal funding for each student?
Our average day attendance, we get summer school does general funding, yes.
How much, I know what the other formula is, 7,900 or 7,200 per kid, but what is it for summer school then?
That's a Dr. Edgar question.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
About 1/6.
1/6?
1/6 of your normal funding.
1,500.
Yeah.
1,500 is that?
And I can get you an exact number.
Now, now I understand kind of why the numbers are important.
Yeah.
To get, to make students enroll if you can.
Sure.
Funding attached to it.
Sure.
So we have a motion to approve the bills on the floor in a second. Call the vote, please.
I didn't have a chance to see this, but approximately, Mr. Edgar, what, what was this total we're about to, that we're approving tonight?
On the bill?
Approximately, within a million or two.
$6,279,000.
Okay, thank you again.
Huh? You don't use your mouse?
No, I've never had it.
Okay.
Thanks, I'll give it a try. Here we go.
Mr. Reader, did yours populate?
Uh, it is now, and I just hit record.
Thank you. Now it just went to zero.
Mine's all back up there in a minute.
Okay, and mine should show abstention, not a yes. So motion passes six, zero with one abstention, and that would be?
I didn't vote yes either. I did not vote a yes.
You did not vote yes? Okay, so, do we need to retake that vote?
No, change it right now.
Okay, so motion passes five to one with one abstention, the no vote, Mr. Reader, the abstention, Mrs. Passley.
In that, now it reads no instead of abstention.
Yeah, it says abstain.
Okay, I'm screening, it reads no.
Okay.
You're saying somewhere?
He abstained, or did he?
No, I abstained, he voted no.
That's what I voted.
And it read correctly.
No, I voted abstention.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that, yes.
So motion passes five, yes, two abstentions, Mrs. Passley and Mr. Reader.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to March financials, Dr. Edgar.
Okay, in your, a copy of your, the packet on your computer, you have the financials, and since we have three members, new board members tonight, I figured it would be good to kind of start off with an explanatory page that kind of explains what you're looking at. So you'll have a supplemental copy, and at the top, it says Fund Accounting Breakdown. So if you pull that out, we'll kind of run through that fund accounting breakdown and kind of talk about what you're looking for whenever you look at the financials. The first fund that we deal with is the General Incidental Fund, that account, we use that account for all financial resources except those required by other funds. This fund accounting is for local taxes, transportation, salaries for non-certified staff, and general education needs such as classroom supplies. So all of our operating, including our non-certified staff. And then if you look underneath one, we have a Supplemental Food Service Fund. We were asked to pull food service aside for tracking purposes, so we use that, but it all filters out of the first fund. So food service would be part of that in the total dollar amount. Teachers' Fund, it's used to account, is exactly what it says, revenue sources legally restricted to expenditures for the purposes of teacher salaries and benefits. Tuition and payments to the other school districts also come from this fund. Fund Three is Debt Service, it's used to account for the resources accumulated for and the payment of long-term debt. Money's collected from Debt Service Tax Levy are placed here and used solely to retire bonded debt. This money cannot be moved from the Debt Service Fund or placed anywhere else. So the Debt Service Fund, it just works cyclical, and then all that money stays in there. Capital Projects Fund, used to account for all facility acquisitions, construction, lease purchase principles, interest payments and other capital outlay. The expenditures for ordinary repairs are not made from this fund, nor are salaries or general maintenance supplies. This money cannot be moved from capital projects once it is placed there. And there was a little bit, this year, because of COVID, they did give us an opportunity, but any other normal year, once that money goes into Fund Four, it has to be used on capital expenditures. While school, schoolers are required to report all the other funds, general teacher, debt service and capital, there are only two that make up the fund balance. This is the most important part. And if you look at the bottom, there's a summary, because you can, if you pull up somebody's ASBR and you look at it, it might show that they deficit spent in the total budget by $7 million. But if you deficit spend in Fund Three and Fund Four, then you could be making prepayments on your bonds, you could be improving roofs, you could be improving asphalt parking lots, you could be improving sidewalks, so you're making improvements to your school district. So that fund balance is only built out of Fund One and Two. So if you look at the bottom, the Part One summary, our total says valuation of December 31st, and it has a number. If you look at Fund One, in that year, last year's ASBR, we had a beginning balance of $24,812,000, we had an ending balance of $27,911,000. So we increased Fund One by a little over $3 million. Fund Two, we zeroed out because legally we have to, so we zeroed it out. So with Fund One and Two, we increased by over $3 million. In Fund Three and Four, you can see that we deficit spent, our ending fund balance in debt service went from $6,505,000 to $3,808,000, so that's a $2,007,000 deficit. The reason for that is because we made prepayments along the way to increase our bonding capacity moving forward, and to save the taxpayers' dollars. And then Capital Projects Fund, we started with a balance of $9 million, and then $9,808, and ended with a balance of $6,808,000. So that's another $3 million deficit. So you can see those deficits, deficits are there, total funds, at the end of the day, it has the, the amount. But one thing, at the bottom, you look at the, our unrestricted ending fund balance is 23.61, and when I got here to St. Joseph, it was 15.99. So are there any questions in regards to the fund accounting breakdown?
Where's the 23.61?
Right here, at the very bottom. And how you get that 20, that's a good question, David, how you get that 23.61? You have your ending fund balance of 27,911177? And you add the total expenditures of 49,423,566 in Fund One, 68,346,572 in Fund Two, divide those two numbers, and it'll be 23.61. So are there any specific questions in regarding to the fund accounting breakdown? All right, the second page you have is the COVID Relief Funds. I know this is something that we have talked about, and I know I've talked to a couple of you about this, exactly where we're at. And we had a webinar last Wednesday, the team from DESI provided guidance on COVID Relief Funds. All information is known to be true and accurate as of 4/14. The reason why I say that, things change every day, and so I just want you to know that that's where we're at as far as 4/14. ESER One was the CARES Dollars. We have to have those spent by September of 2021. Our allotment was 2,699. Our non-public proportionate share was 287. Those dollars have been spent, and if you would like complete documentation of that, that can be provided. Gears Dollars, 313,2020, and those are also need to be spent by 2021. SJSD's allotment was 438,434, and we have spent that on Wi-Fi enabled student devices. We did also have a non-public in that as well.
Can you explain to the non-public, is that the school?
So non-public is any school in our school district, private, private schools. And so we have to fund them as well, and all that tracking has to go through us.
What is the MSC gear? I kind of understand the ESER Fund, CARES Act.
Yeah, the Gears Dollars was strictly technology, it was a grant that we filled out. And then the Transportation Supplement, we didn't qualify for, but I put it on there just so you guys would know it was there. The ESER Two Dollars, that's what we're waiting on right now. We anticipate getting those numbers here pretty, pretty shortly. I think it's safe to say that we're going to receive close to $11 million on ESER Two. ESER Three, as you can see down below, we're anticipating that ESER Three is going to be $2.2 million more than ESER Two. And so if you just take 2.2, 2.2 times, excuse me, not 2.2 million, 2.2 times more, you could, you could come up with a number. I'm not going to specifically state a number tonight because we don't have any numbers from DESI as of yet. And then on the ESER Three, you can also see that 20% of the allocation must be used to address learning loss. And I'll kind of talk here in a minute down at the bottom. If you look at the suggested uses at the bottom of the page, summer school costs that not, not covered by the foundation formula, intensive tutoring, learning acceleration, and capital purchases. And so what we're looking at as far as our, spending our ESER Dollars on, we're in a, we're in a very unique situation because we don't have air conditioning at Benton, Lafayette, and Central, and so this is going to allow us to use some of those dollars towards that. And then the other thing that we're looking at is, we'll qualify as far as intensive tutoring and learning acceleration, and we're looking at bringing some sort of career ladder type thing back to the school district. So I know that's a lot of information very fast, but at this time, I would entertain questions you might have in regards to COVID relief.
So what do you have in mind for the ESER Three?
It would, it would all combine into the Heating and Cooling and the Career Ladder Program.
Because, remind them, the Heating and Cooling for those three schools is going to be about how much?
About $27 million.
Thank you, Dr. Edgar. Do you want to move on to March financials?
Yep, so if you look at the financials now, that you kind of understand what the funds are, you'll notice on the first page, we have Financial Summary of Operating, Fund One, and as you can see, our expenditures are 63% for the year. We're already through the month of April, so those are pretty good. And on the revenue side, we have 89% received for Fund Two. On the Teachers' Fund, 66%. And on And on the revenue, we have received 77. Debt Service, you can see that expenditure side is 100% and the revenue side is 101%. So we have that covered as well. Financial summary for Capital Projects, on the expenditure side, $7,116,113. And on the revenue side, only $461,000. So no revenue's coming in as far as those are concerned, but we have the budgeted amount for the expenditures, and we have not went over budget. Nutrition Services is one that I wanted to talk about. As you can see on the expenditure side, we've spent $3,196,000. And on the revenue side, we've only received $2,004,000. So that shows that we are deficit spending in Food Service. And we knew that this was going to be the case. I do believe we're going to receive some more revenue between now and June 30th that will help bridge that gap or take that gap away, but we will deficit spend in Food Service. We just had no idea how to figure out how much food to prepare, you know, when kids are not coming to school, and we're not getting revenue for that. And so there was no way to not deficit spend. This number is a lot less than I thought it was going to be.
And it's not unusual to deficit spend in Food Service just on the general.
No, I mean, but you try to break even the best that you can. And, you know, one thing that we have not done since I've been here, we haven't raised the prices. You know, I don't, I don't feel like it's good to make money off of Food Service, and so we try to balance it as quick as we can, or as close as we can. But we will deficit spend. It will not be over $700,000, but we will deficit spend some. So at this time, I would entertain any questions you guys might have in regards to financials. And I would just encourage the new board members to come in and sit down and kind of go through this stuff with me. Whenever you have time, I know everybody's busy, but we, I can break it down a little bit more on a one-on-one.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
No, I plan to spend more time than you want me to, really, since I'm on the Finance Committee.
Yeah. Well, I'm looking forward to it.
You could probably apply for Hazard's Duty Pay. I did have a couple of questions, and I'm running a little bit slow on catching, setting up with the, back on J, under bills. Remember J, I was just curious as to what assessment survey plan is and how much it costs us? If it's a bill we're paying, I was just curious about.
Yeah, we're not on that agenda item, so.
We're not today, yeah. So that'll be a.
Oh, we're coming up to it.
Okay.
Yeah, we're clear back up, we're before A.
We're under Agenda Item Seven, Personnel and Finance Treasurers Report, and he was going through the March Financials, B.
Right. Right, I was talking about, I was talking about A.
A for personal bills?
Right. There's a question, I'll ask it later, I just didn't ask it in time. I did raise my hand, which one you saw me, but I don't know what you guys want.
You can always ask him, he'll give you the answer.
Under A, under A, then, Bills paid. Number J reads as some type of a school district assessment and survey.
Okay.
So is that, is that not something we pay for?
Yes, it is, and it's something that they're going to present to you here in just a few minutes.
Okay.
So you'll have an opportunity to.
So I'm actually ahead of everything.
Yeah.
All right, the last question, since you're the financial man, Mr. Reader, on top of your relief bill.
Yeah, COVID relief, yeah.
And I guess the grand total started out there somewhere around 2.6 million?
Uh huh.
Okay. Now, this is just kind of like, obviously, we're using it for things like air conditioning, but this must be because really our tax base has not been affected. I mean, I still pay my personal property tax, and I still pay all my real estate property tax, so your, your revenue is not declining because of the, from our basis where we get our funding, right? So this is 2.6 million, this is extra credit, we really didn't need it because we've got all the money we are entitled to through the taxation process.
Okay, I think I understand your question, and yes, that is supplemental dollars. The 2.6 million dollars was supplemental to help with COVID relief. And like I said, we do have documentation. It actually is less than 2.6, but you have, because you have to back out the non-public, so it was more 2.3 something. But we have documentation on everything that that was spent on. We actually also received some CARES Dollars from the county, which we also have documented, and I'm happy to share all of that with you. But yes, to answer your question, Mr. Reader, it is supplemental dollars.
And I would add to that, Mr. Reader, that yes, it was very much needed because the expense of having to deal with COVID, with the extra cleaning, you name it, testing that we did, providing masks and all of that is very, very expensive. So we're grateful to get that money from the government to help us. Otherwise, we would be deficit spending by now.
All right, then, kind of, what's, what's the theory then is that we use some of it, I guess 400,000, or what do we use for air conditioning on this bunch, on that pile of?
We haven't used any for air conditioning yet, and we plan to use some for air conditioning in S R Two and S R Three. That will have to be combined if the plan is, or the goal is of the Board of Education to put proper HVAC systems in your high schools, Lafayette, Benton, and Central, then you will eat up a lot of that money. And I did not put any specific dollar amounts in here yet because I'm not sure exactly what the revenue stream's going to be, but as soon as I find that out, I'll pass some information along.
Thanks, thank you very much.
You bet.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the financials as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore makes the motion, and a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. So Mr. Gilmore made the motion, Mr. Foster seconded and called for the vote. Mr. Reader, did yours come up?
Yeah.
I've got yours. Mr. Foster, yours is the one that I'm missing.
I got it.
You get it? Okay, thank you. Motion passes 6-0 with one extension, Mr. Reader. Moving on to item number C, Personnel Report. Dr. Kraus, good evening.
Good evening. For the board members, at each of your workstations, I left two documents. One was the supplemental Personnel Report, and then the other one is the salary schedule that pertains to a later item. I don't think there's anything unusual in the, either the regular Personnel Report or the supplemental, other than that they're much longer than usual. If you'll see, we have two sections that account for almost 200 employees that will be involved in summer school. So that, that is why there's much longer. I do need to have you look at the regular report on Roman numeral 15, which is page eight of 12. If you would, we've had a personnel shift since this was turned in.
Okay. We just pulled it up.
Roman numeral. Roman numeral 15, which is page eight of 12. And what I need to, what I'm asking you to do is to approve these as presented with the exception that the employee on line four of Roman numeral 15 be removed. He has since changed his plans since this report was submitted.
Okay, so for new board members, if you clicked on the paper clip, that's the original Personnel Report, that's the report that he's talking about, and you go to Roman numeral, tell me again, Dr. Kraus.
15.
15.
X V, for those of you who aren't Romans.
And page eight, okay. And we're removing number four.
Number four.
Okay.
Any questions?
Follow that? Okay. Any questions on the Personnel Report, either the one that was attached and/or the one that was given to you this evening? Not seeing any? I would entertain a motion to approve the Personnel Report with the supplemental and the correction to.
Roman numeral.
Roman numeral.
15.
15, number four. I will make that motion. Do I need to repeat it all? Okay, good, thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So the motion was made by Ms. Witham and seconded by Ms. Williams, and we'll call for the vote. Mr. Gilmore, did you vote?
I just.
You just did, okay.
I was better than to report this.
That's okay. Okay, motion passes 6-0 with one extension, and that was Mrs. Pasley, myself. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Action Items. A, Banking Services RFP. Dr. Edgar.
Okay, you have a bank depository services document in your packet, and you can see that we received three bids back, or actually, we received two bids back, U M B and Commerce. U S Bank did not send the check in. And so this has been vetted by the Finance Committee, and right now, our current services are with U M B. So this would be a seamless transition to move into another three-year agreement. And so our recommendation tonight is to continue with United Missouri Bank. And at this time, I would entertain any questions that you might have in regard, in regards to depository services.
Okay, not seeing or hearing any questions, I would entertain a motion to approve U M B as bank depository.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore, and a second.
Second.
Thank you. So motion made by Mr. Gilmore, seconded by Mrs. Witham. We'll call for the vote. Motion passes 7-0. B, Roof Projects, 2021, Phase One. Mr. Gill, good evening.
Good evening. We decided to, you got a revised report this afternoon electronically, and I put a hard copy on your, on your desk. We felt a lot of questions on what we're going to do moving forward with the schools that we have listed here. We decided to take a proactive approach to this, to step back to see with your guidance how we will move forward from this point. So what we're going to present tonight, or I'm going to present tonight, you see the roof toss. We had three companies that bid on the roofs projects. As you can see, Hausmann was the lowest bidder for Central, Rubidu, Skates, Spring Garden, and a combined bid of $368,750. At this time, I'd like to recommend Hausmann Roofing for them, for that amount to move forward with C I P this year.
What was the amount again?
$368,750.
And one thing that I would like to touch on a little bit, if you noted, the bottom base one bid for the Pear Street Warehouse, base three bid for Eugene Field, base six bid for Noyce Virtual Academy, were all pulled out because those are buildings that are under discussions. And so we can put this information back after, you know, the Facilities Committee, if they decide to do that. So I just wanted you to know that, that that's the reason for that. And thanks, thanks to Mickey for taking care of this.
Hey, any questions or comments for Mr. Gill or Dr. Edgar?
No, I just wanted to say I appreciate taking those buildings out. Hopefully, the public understands when we put out the RFP, that's not spending the dollars. Tonight, we're approving spending dollars. And so by pulling out those three buildings, because we are in, there are discussions about how we proceed with these buildings. Let's not immediately spend the money if we're going to do something more with those buildings. So I appreciate pulling those out until we make that decision. So I would make a motion that we approve Hausmann for the base bids for the Central Rubidu Skates Spring Garden Roofing as presented on this.
Okay, thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. And any questions or comments?
Yeah, a question. I'm looking at the, the buildings that we have removed and that have been in question of what their future is with the school district. I guess one question I would have is if we defer repair, doing roof repairs to these buildings, are we at risk of any internal damage to these buildings?
To be honest, as a maintenance person, yes. When you compromise a roof, you never know the longevity of that roof. At this point, we'll try to do the best we can to repair them or what we need to do to, to the next phase. But this is a concern of mine, not doing the roofs, to be honest with you.
And there's a reason, you know, and we've, we've done a pretty good job over the last few years of getting these on a, on a better rotation schedule. And so, yeah, we're going to go off of that rotation schedule, and, yeah, you're always taking some risks. But until we know what the future of the district holds, there's no reason to spend $350,000 if some of those buildings aren't going to be used. I can't imagine that all of them would not be used. Some of, all of them would go away, I guess, is what I'm saying. I can't imagine that every one of them are not going to be used. But, you know, there are a couple on that list that we could definitely do without.
Well, we could circle back.
Sure.
Six months.
Right.
We need to.
We have the bids, right?
Yes.
So we could come back in four, even four months and say, no, we, we see a vision for this building, we need to get that done.
You would probably have to rebid. Bids are only good for a certain amount of time. The company is going to have, so we'd have to follow through on that as well because they're, they're going to have to see if their costs have changed, something like that. So a bid you got today may not be the same, but you can always circle back like you said, but you can't hold somebody to the bid that they gave today for something you want six months from now.
Well, I, yeah, I understand that. But we haven't, this at least gives a rough idea when we go, you know, so if we get a bid that's way off from that, I wouldn't question.
Do you recommend that there's a timeframe that we revisit the buildings that we're not going to fix or we put new roofs on at this point?
Do you want to visit those locations?
Yeah.
Yes, that would be no problem at all, just contact.
Well, not just visit them, to revisit the conversation of putting the roofs on them.
Making house.
Would you say that's three or four or five months from now, we should talk about that?
Usually, mostly bids are 30, 30 days. But I'll reach out to the contractors tomorrow to see leadway.
And really, Mr. Foster, a lot of that will depend on where the Facilities Committee goes, because we're not doing anything with these now because they're being talked about in facilities with, are we going to repurpose that building for something else or not use that building again in the future? So it's probably going to be well into the fall, maybe even next winter, before we maybe know where that's going, but we can revisit at that time and send out new bids at that time. Better, I feel like, to do it then, spend the money then, rather than spending the money tonight, when we're not sure what we're going to do with those buildings.
And maybe, I heard you wrong, Mr. Foster, but I think he was asking, is there a timeframe that you think makes the most sense from a facility side of things? Is that what you're asking?
Exactly.
You're asking him?
Yeah.
How long, if you're not going to do something today, how long do you feel comfortable waiting before a decision has to be made?
I would be within next year. I want, I'd like to get this done, if we're going to fix them. So you have about a year window. So you have about a year window.
Okay. Good question.
And we do also have all the specs, cookie cutter. So six months now, if we have to put it back out, it's pretty painless.
And it's budgeted.
And budgeted.
That's important. Okay, any other questions? So Laura, you made the motion to accept the roof projects as presented, and Mr. Gilmore, you seconded. Okay, so we're ready to vote.
My ballot has something about accepting the low bids from Robert Roofing on it.
That's the ones we pulled out.
It's showing that?
It's still showing here.
Just when I have the thing, it says Housman. It's motion to accept low bids from Housman Roofing.
Yeah, this does say.
You probably, yeah. It's showing online, it's not on yours because it's probably, you probably need to refresh your computer. But you are not voting on that part. You're only voting on the top, the base bid number one.
Yeah, it says Roberts Four, but that's specific for Field and Noise.
Right.
But we're not voting on that.
Right. So you are voting for accepting the low bids from Housman Roofing for Pear Street Warehouse, Central? Rubidoo Skate and Spring Garden.
I don't know who did drop call.
Okay. Maybe it refreshed it, that's why.
We're still waiting for one other?
We're still waiting for two votes.
We're voting?
Uh huh, please.
Spending the money for the ones, not the ones that have been pulled.
Correct.
We are not setting aside the money for those, no.
No. It's budgeted, but we're not necessarily setting it aside. We're just spending the money for Housman Roofing for those schools that are acknowledged. Motion passes six zero with one abstention, Latonya Williams. Okay, moving on to asphalt repair and replacement. Mr. Gill?
Same thing. We went ahead and pulled the schools, Noise, Pickett, Webster, 801 South Ninth, and Pershing Elementary. So what we did, we put out bids. Unfortunately, we only received one bid from Keller Construction. So at this point, I would recommend to approve Keller Construction for Rubidoo, Hilliards, and Parkway for $109,700.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve those bids from Keller Construction as presented by Mr. Gill?
I move to approve the bids for Rubidoo, Hilliards, and Parkway from Keller Construction.
Thank you.
I'll second that one.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
Do we have any thoughts on why we just got one bidder this time?
We advertised in the paper for 10 days. This is the only one that responded back to us.
How many do you normally, you don't normally only get one or two?
I believe last year.
I was going to say, I don't think we typically get a lot for asphalt.
We normally get two. I think Keller was the only one last year as well that bid on the jobs.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Kenny, I'm sorry.
I was just curious, because we have kind of an expert sitting here at the table with Mr. Gilmore. Do those roofing bids look good to you?
Well, I can't, I don't know, Kenny. I haven't, I didn't see the drawings. I don't know how much roofing they're doing or anything. I do notice my old copy didn't bid at all, though.
That's why I was curious, because you might know about it in likeness because I know you've been an expert in roofing.
Yeah, I'm a mini golf guy.
Yeah, I know. You're retired.
Okay, I will call for the vote on the asphalt repair and replacement. Motion passes seven oh.
Thank you.
Maybe, thank you, Mr. Gill. Moving on to action item D, E S Y L P N pay rate. Is that Ms. Clark?
It is for tonight. We just had a student who's going to need an L P N for, I think it's a half-day for E S Y services, as was determined by his I E P. That rate is $18 an hour. That's the same rate as it was last year. Nothing has changed.
May I explain what E S Y is?
Oh, E S Y is Extended School Year. So it is for students who have an I E P, and it was deemed that they might lose skills or were within a learning burst. And so we wanted to ensure that they came for summer school, and we would provide them services over the summer so they didn't regress significantly.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the additional summer school pay rate as recommended.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Witham, in a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Clark? Seeing or hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Motion passes seven oh. Item E, S O P, Salary Schedule, Dr. Kraus?
Yes, thank you. In your package, you should have two different salary schedules, one labeled Current and one labeled Proposed. If you'll notice on the Proposed one, the Proposed changes are in red on the lower right-hand side.
Wait, wait a minute. We're on the S O P?
Yep. Lower right-hand side, the red letters.
Oh, over here, okay. I was looking for Proposed. Sorry.
Okay. So what needs to be added back is the Grandfather B A column. In our software that we use, the person on that line was on Step 31, so it rolled them clear off of the table, and therefore, that column disappeared, and we caught that, and so that needs to be reinstated. And then the column under Masters, when it took that column off, it slid everything to the left, and the indexing was different there. So the numbers are slightly higher in the Grandfather Masters column now than they were on the original one, but we do have it correct now. I'm 99.99% sure. Are there any questions on that?
Not seeing any, I'd entertain a motion to accept the addition to the S O P salary schedule. You might tell them what S O P is.
That's a speech and language pathologist.
As presented.
Okay, I will, I move to approve the corrected salary schedule as presented.
Thank you. In a second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Gilmore, thank you. So motion by Mrs. Witham, seconded by Mr. Gilmore. Call for the vote, please. Motion passes six zero with one abstention. That would be Mr. Reader. Item F, Additional Pay Rates for 2021-22, Dr. Kraus?
All right, in your pocket, you should have had two, a Current and a Proposed Additional Pay Rates. I'd like to tell you this will be the last revision to this. I'm quite certain that it won't. This is the one that catches a lot of things that we find the need to add new or to subtract sometime during the year. It is Current, well, the Proposed one is Current as of today. If you'll notice on the Current one, the things in red are the things that are being either modified or deleted. So you'll see on Page One, right in the middle, Coverage for Class Period. We begin this school year paying $10 per hour for that. Around the first of December, we changed to 20. We found that was very popular with our staff and also gave our kids a better experience because they were being covered by our own employees. So that will, you'll see a change to 20 in the next version of it. On Page Two, there were no changes to the Current one. If you look at Page Three, right in the middle, there are three teacher leader issues. Those are in red because they're going to be removed. We were slated to be in a grant program dealing with teacher leadership. With all the chaos caused by COVID, we also had administrator transition and a shift in our student population, so we withdrew from that grant. So those three are no longer necessary. Couple inches farther down, T M C hourly rates. We put a new Range One on the Support Staff Salary Schedule that encompasses that. So it'll be removed from the additional pay rates. And then the tutoring right below that was $17 per hour, and that's going to be changed to 25. That's something that could well change if we use some of the money coming in to start something resembling a career ladder. But for today, that's where we are with that. Then if you look at the Proposed document, you'll see in the first page, Coverage for Class Period's changed to $20 an hour. On Page Two, there are two additional items. Online accommodations, course revision, and of course, credit recovery creation. Those are things that Dr. Williams asked me to put on there for people who are developing and revising our online curriculum. Dr. Williams, is there anything else you want to add on that?
I think it's important to note that as we are revising the courses and writing the credit recovery courses, we have been paying outside providers for these. So as we have developed and revised these courses in-house, there would be substantial savings in tuition that we are not paying to launch or adenuity of those outside providers. So I just want you to be aware that the fees that we're paying our staff to develop these courses are far outweighed by the savings we'll realize in tuition that we would have paid.
And I'd much rather pay our own people.
And then on Page Three of the document, you'll see the change to $25 per hour for tutoring. I think that covers all of the changes. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, my name is.
I have a question. On the original, on Page Three, the teacher training, is that also like a grant?
Yes, all of those.
All three of those are grant funded?
Yes, and we opted to pull out of the grant for various reasons, so those are no longer applicable.
Okay. Okay, cool. I understand. I only ask because there are only two that mention in the parentheses that it was grant funded, and the last one didn't. And so I just want a clarification, thank you.
Yes, you are correct. They're all grant funded things. Any other questions?
Not seeing or hearing any, I would entertain a motion to approve the additional pay rate salary schedule as presented.
I will move to accept the proposed additional pay rates as Dr. Kraus provided.
I'll second that one.
Thank you, Dr. Green. So Ms. Witham motion, but Dr. Green seconded, and we'll call for a vote.
Mr. Foster, did you move?
Has come up.
How did you move? Sorry.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero with one abstention, Mr. Reader. Moving on to item H, Wonders E L A Resource Subscription. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I missed that. Pay rates for J R O T C instructors for 21-22. Dr. Kraus?
Just for a brief background on this, all of our high schools have J R O T C programs, and they're staffed by personnel that are recruited by the Army. The Army tells us what pay level they are going to have. They don't really fall on any of our salary schedules. The Army has a formula that they use to determine their compensation. If you'll notice toward the left-hand side under Step, that tells the base salary of each of those four employees. That amount is split equally between the school district and the Army. And then if you go over about four more columns to Extra Duty, you'll see they all have an Extra Duty stipend that is paid by the district. So we pay half of the base salary plus the Extra Duty, and that's why the, it's not an exactly 50-50 cost in that box on the right-hand side. I would ask that you would approve this as presented. Does anyone have any questions?
Not seeing or hearing any, I would entertain a motion to approve the J R O T C salaries as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Green. So motion by Mrs. Witham, seconded by Dr. Green. Call for the vote, please.
Yes, I'm done.
Eric?
Mr. Foster, is there any problems?
Motion approved, seven oh. Now ready for H, Wonders E L A Resource Subscription. Dr. Williams?
Thank you. I noticed one typo that I made in the item. It is K six, Wonders. I typed K five. I just wanted to make that note before I begin. I did research in previous board minutes and found that the initial Wonders E L A K six curriculum was approved on March 9, 2015. So I want to make that part of the information that I present tonight. So I was not in the district at that time. I'll say that again. March 9, 2015 was the initial approval for this Wonders K through five English Language Arts Connect Ed English Language Arts Curriculum. And so we will begin an English Language Arts Curriculum Revision next year. This is the only resource that was purchased at that time on a six-year basis, apparently, as opposed to a seven-year basis because all K 12 E L A resources were approved on March 9, 2015, according to the archived board docs. For whatever reason, there will be a one-year gap for our elementary students. I don't know, I can't explain because there isn't a lot of detail in those board docs about why the subscriptions for elementary and secondary were different numbers of years. So we need to make sure that our elementary students So we need to make sure that our elementary students and teachers have access to consumables for English Language Arts reading and writing for the same number of years as our secondary students have, ahead of the curriculum revision and resource adoption. So this is really a gap filler for the year that they are not under contract for a curriculum resource. Again, I don't have a lot of detail to provide, and this is a $136,000 purchase for K through six English Language Arts teacher and student resources, reading and writing, on the Connect Ed platform. Our rep was very gracious. They actually expire in April, and we will get them accessed through August, which is when the renewal would take place. I'm sorry, you're not hearing me?
Brian isn't.
Sorry. Sorry, Dr. Green. So I have budgeted in my FY '22 budget for academic services, $136,000 to provide the teacher and student resources for elementary English Language Arts. And we will begin the curriculum revision cycle next year for K12.
So this is approved, the purchase for one year to continue the Wonders K5 or K6?
K6.
K6 for ELA resource. I would entertain a motion to approve this purchase for one year.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So moved by Ms. Witham, seconded by Dr. Green. Any questions or comments?
You broke it in.
Motion passes six one with our no vote being Mr. Reader. Moving on to item I, K12 Math Resources.
Thank you. As I presented last month, the math, K through 12 curriculum was approved by the Board of Education along with resource purchases for the secondary level. The elementary resource quotes and bids had not come in yet. I'll remind everyone and introduce to the new board members that anytime a curriculum is revised, the teachers in the district pilot various resources to see which resources work best with instruction and with students in terms of alignment to the curriculum and the state Missouri learning standards and those that have been identified as priority standards. So the ones that you see in front of you this evening are revised on the secondary level to three-year rather than seven-year, as were presented last month, because after some extensive conversations with academic services, with our curriculum advisor team, seven years is a long time to be locked into a resource. I've always been a believer in three years and evaluate, particularly in mathematics, where we need to pay very close attention to increased performance. If the resources are not working for us, or if the standards need to be revisited and then the resources do not align, having a long-time resource that you cannot shift away from is not a good situation to be in. So with the elementary resources being brought this month, with the AP Calculus quote, the rep came back to Dr. Dorsey noting an error that was presented in that quote, so I was going to have to bring that back for revision this month anyway. We decided that bringing the entire package in as a three-year resource package was the better way to proceed. So what you'll see before you this evening is a three-year K through 12 Math Resource Adoption. K through five is the Ready Consumable Work Tests and Teacher Guides. The six through 12 Envision Math Resources, including Special Education Resources, and then the Advanced Placement Statistics and Calculus Resources. The total is $554,572.58 for the entire package. That is different than the seven-year package, which would have been $1,154,706.77. So that is a significant savings, and it allows us the ability to really evaluate the quality of the resources in terms of student learning. And I think there is great value in that.
I do, too.
Are there any questions?
No, but I appreciate taking it from seven years to three, because as educators, we all know, sometimes you change from hour to hour depending on what's working. So locking in for that kind of price tag for seven years, I appreciate. Now, you did mention that this does include purchases for all specialized classes or just the self-contained math?
This is the Direct Instruction Self-contained Mathematics, because the CWC, they are-
What do you use for regular?
Yeah, they are supposed to be using the regular education instructional text.
It's just in past years, because I lived 12 years of my career in that world, and sometimes we didn't always get to the sources.
For new board members, CWC means Class Within a Class, and that is when a student with an IEP or an Individualized Education Plan is included in the regular education classroom with additional support. Maybe a paraprofessional pushes into that class to provide support to all students, but provides additional supports to students who would have an IEP. No one knows who in the classroom has an IEP, but additional supports are provided.
I've got a couple of questions, too.
Sure.
How does it compare to the previous curriculum? How does it compare to other districts? What does the professional development look like for other teachers around the math curriculum?
Sure. So anytime you have a new curriculum, it is important to provide additional professional development. So we have in the professional development plan that you will see in the coming item, there is very specific professional development around math and the math curriculum. Todd Henneken and some other very specific math curriculum and math professional development is noted, so you'll see that in there. In addition to that, Mr. Foster, I would tell you that our math instruction and our ability to design instruction, that is what we would call Tier One on grade level, needs a lot of attention to increase our academic performance there. So that is something that we have been working on as an academic services team, a curriculum advisor team. And I think you saw from the Friday update that we are making some small gains in terms of our comparison in terms of the learning gaps with the loss of last spring compared to where some districts nationally are, but we're not where we want to be. And that has to get better. So we are doing a lot of work in those areas. In terms of other districts, Envision and the Ready Toolbox are things that many districts that do perform very well use. Some districts near us use something called Open Educational Resources. That allows teachers to do a lot of accessing of resources that are openly available. That takes a lot of instructional design skill, and in those districts, they don't have a lot of students who are below grade level in performance. So I don't think that we would be a good candidate for that at this time. We need something that is more guided, like the resources you see here with Envision and with the Ready Toolbox. That answer your question?
Yeah, I think it does. So I also like the option of keeping it for three years, just see how it works. You know, let it prove itself, and we'll see what happens, I guess.
And these are dollars that are already budgeted. You know, it's not an ask above and beyond. So in case anybody's wondering about that.
And I think it was last month when the curricular advisors came and presented the math plan that they had written for the next few years. And probably without a doubt, it is the best vehicle we've had in a long time to potentially raise math scores. And as a former math teacher, I was thrilled with it. Now, that's the plan. Now we're adding tonight the resources they need to be able to-
Implement.
-instruct and implement the plan. Yeah.
So I move to approve-
Okay, go ahead, and then we'll take questions.
I move to approve the purchase of the K12 Math Resources for three years as presented.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. I think Mr. Foster, Dr. Green seconded it just a little ahead of you. And Mr. Reader, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, I did. So is this like a, kind of like a vendor, this plan, or is it the same vendor type person we're using?
These are four different vendors.
Four different vendors?
Uh huh.
It's in this, was it a $500,000 deal?
Ready Toolbox is for K through five.
Okay.
Six through 12 is Savis, which is Envision Math. The Advanced Placement Statistics is Bedford, Freeman, and Worth. And Advanced Placement Calculus is Sendgate.
So in other words, they're choosing what they think is the best of the best in order to meet the needs.
And so the administration chose-
No, the teachers then.
Teachers.
Teachers did.
The teachers piloted curriculum.
Teachers in every building, and the writers piloted different resources, and they chose which ones worked the best in alignment with the curriculum.
The ones the teachers were totally involved in, in charge of this.
They made the recommendations to me.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to item J, St. Joseph School District Assessment and Survey Plan. Dr. Lau, good evening.
Good evening. First of all, we're going to talk about the assessment plan and the survey plan. And so the plan that we are presenting to you tonight is very similar to the plan that we used last year, but one of the things that you'll find is we made at least two relatively big adjustments. You may remember, and if you were here as a board member, and if, you know, you're brand-new, one of the things that we were facing last year when we developed our assessment plan was unfinished learning, because we had had a closure. It was a, something that we met a lot about, and it was something that nationally was a conversation. It was also a conversation with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And so they developed what they called some MOLEAP assessments and performance events, because the idea was when we came back to school, having to go all the way back and try to fill those gaps, how would that work unless we use standards to drive our instruction in ways that would cause us to be on grade level, that allow us to do just-in-time teaching, so that we maximized our time? If there was ever a year to be really efficient and effective, it's every year, but last year with gaps that we had, especially in mathematics, that affect all of our student populations differently, with those in poverty, the data would show that it does very much affect them. And so we really have, we have 70% free reduced lunch, so it was a very big part of our assessment plan last year to develop common formative assessments that we asked our buildings to take part in at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year. And we developed those with teams of teachers. We developed those with DESI experts that were developing these MOLEAP assessments and performance events. And we also developed them in conjunction with folks that were writing curriculum and our curriculum advisors. So we did that last year to standardize a process, to get it out there, and to ensure that we were doing everything we could to close gaps for students. And as Dr. Williams pointed out, some of the preliminary data is certainly suggesting that we have closed gaps, certainly in reading, even though reading was not as impacted by the gaps, but we are not in a place where we're at the national levels of the gaps that are being seen in mathematics. So knowing that, one of the things, too, that we did this year that's different is we are going to decentralize the common formative assessments, and buildings will be developing those at grade levels with their building administrators, but teachers will be collaborating on a building level to develop that type of an assessment. So those were pulled out of the district plan and have been given to teachers and administrators to develop those. And again, the notion, though, continues to be the same, is that highly effective teachers use data to drive instruction.
Amen.
And so it's just very important that those systems stay in place, but now it gets to be a little more personalized, because we're not in a closure right now. We have time for these groups to come together and develop these plans. So you'll notice that the overarching district assessment plan is slimmed down, so to speak. And you can find that in your attachment, I believe it starts on page nine. And I have a handout if you'd like to have that as well. The other thing that I wanted to mention about that as well is we are getting ready to launch some professional development surrounding choosing priority standards, which is highly important to common formative assessment. And in addition to that, generating what the work that John Hattie does about criteria and certainly success criteria. And so that will help teachers have better and richer conversations when they do look at data, to help them drive instructional improvements, because we need to continue to be highly effective and efficient with our instruction so that we continue to close gaps for these students. We know now from things like what happened at Katrina, you know, Joplin, when kids have closures and gaps in their learning, the impacts are lifelong. And so we take that very, very clearly. We take that very seriously. In addition, one other thing that we're going to be adding this year to our platforms goes part and parcel with what Dr. Williams just presented in terms of curriculum. An assessment tends to go hand-in-hand with that. And this is called Math Excel, and it is specific to Algebra I, because we have a platform existing, it's called iReady. So we don't need to buy an additional platform for the curriculum purchase, but we are going to select Algebra I, because we started working on Algebra I last year. It is an area for us to improve in based on data. And just today, I went over our data again with a team that I meet with regularly, and algebraic thinking is an area of concern in that particular dataset. So especially in our seventh and eighth grade, because again, math was really impacted by the closure. So having this assessment platform in ninth grade, where our seventh and eighth graders are headed, is going to be really impactful for them. And the teachers piloted it already. They have a pretty good use for it, and we've already started professional development in all of these areas, just to start getting folks used to some of the ideas of it as we bring them on and get approval for them. So those are some of the things that you'll see that have changed. In addition, I think there was a question about, you know, how much do we budget for our surveys and assessments? The assessment addition that we budgeted for is the quote that's- The assessment addition that we budgeted for is the quote that's attached that came with the curriculum purchase for secondary, I believe it's $127,000. And then in addition to that, the surveys that we use, the folks that are on the Academic Services Committee will tell you that we use a lot of data to drive improvement. We have a balanced scorecard. And so a lot of the surveys that we have, we purchased so that we have comparative data. If you don't have comparative data, it makes it very hard to understand if 70% is good or if 70% is not good. So if 70% of our students say they feel safe, what's that mean? Is that good? Is that not good? And so how do we drive towards improvement? So we have the Gallup Student Poll that we give. We have added in addition the Q-12 Employee Engagement Survey, and that too is from Gallup. And that came out of a program evaluation to help us better understand employee engagement. Because highly engaged employees mean better performing organizations. So for us to have that data and have comparative data and strategies that go with those elements as to how to drive to improved employee engagement, help us make planning, help us make plans. So we deploy that survey as well. We have a community engagement survey. One of the things that came out of the Business Services Program Evaluation, not last year, but the previous year, was that we had a gap in better understanding taxpayers that aren't parents of our students or not staff members. So we needed to better understand some survey from that segment of the population and again, have comparative data so that we can understand, is this good, is this not good, and what might we do next? In addition, we have a more regular survey response now where we look at quarterly surveys so that our community, and this year it was online, but for clear reasons. But so that we are not just engaging community members in feedback when there is an issue that we are seeking financial support for, but so that we can recursively get that information and provide better communication to them and make adjustments. And so that's certainly something that Eileen and Dr. Van Zyl and I and others have been looking at that data to better understand as we continue to move forward. Because using anecdotal data from certain segments of the population doesn't just give you a whole taste of the soup, so to speak. So for those price points, our surveys, typically we have budgeted 30,000, between 30 and 34,000. We've budgeted for that this year. In addition, we have software that we use to house our balance scorecard because it takes data and better turns it into graphical representations that folks can understand. And that's called Tableau. It's kind of a fancy version of Excel, but what it does is help turn data into things that, like our balance scorecard or our comparison set. And so you'll see more of that as time goes on, but that's why we purchased that particular software. So that is the amount that we would budget for the items that I mentioned this year in addition to the Math Excel platform. And that budget has already been submitted to the Business Services Office. So the last thing I'm going to mention, and I'll make it quick, is the results that we're getting. And again, I met with some folks today. I think that, I think we can be encouraged right now in terms of math. We're only 1% below the national average as to where kids are right now in terms of being either on grade level or early on grade level for math. And so that is better news than it could be. And so we were encouraged by that. In reading, we're actually 5% higher than the national data would show in early on grade level or on grade level in terms of reading. And even more importantly, a lot of times for us is for kids that are two or three grade levels below, because those are the kids that are very impacted by the closure. We are 5% below the national average in terms of that population, which is good. That means we have less kids in that segment of the population. So both ends were good news. In addition, in terms of our annual performance scorecard that we get back from the state, how we are asked to perform and our goals that the state lays out for us, they do that in terms of what's called a Math Performance Index. And in 2019, our Math Performance Index in reading was a 312. In March of this year, our Math Performance Index is predicted with a high correlation to be, was 314. So at that time in March, we had already outpaced what we did in May of 2019 during a pandemic. So that also was good news for us.
Great news, yeah.
And really, and we are doing some predictions based on data and based on what we saw in terms of gains between when we did a diagnostic assessment, which tells us how the kids are doing in terms of grade level mastery. We did some analysis on that, and it's leading us to believe that we may see 11 of our 14 elementaries improve 5% in reading during the pandemic. And that is a credit to our teachers. They've been here, and they've been working extraordinarily hard to close gaps. And in math, while we do have always, you know, room for improvement, the fact that we're not, we didn't let the bottom drop out for these kids, I think is important. So that's the assessment portion of this presentation, but I'm happy to entertain your questions.
Not a question, but a comment. I have to confess, when I studied the assessment plan and did my homework at my dining room table yesterday, there might have been a slight happy dance that took place when I realized decentralizing is the word you used. But to take those, the common formative assessments, turn it back to the buildings, I think you're going to get a higher engagement from the staff, you're going to get a better buy-in from the staff, and I think they will understand better what it takes going through that process. So I was tickled, tickled to death to see that, so thank you.
You bet. I agree with everything you just said.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the district assessment and survey plan as presented.
There's a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Reader.
So this program we're buying again or continuing is $127,000?
That's the Math Excel, and that's for Algebra I. And the quote is attached in your packet. And so that is the number that we received as a quote from Math Excel.
Okay, the 127, what are we getting?
We are getting an assessment platform for Algebra I, which means that the students will take both longer assessments and shorter assessments, that the teachers use that data than to turn around and make an instructional plan. And so it will help them better understand how the students are doing and differentiate their instruction and help the students improve in terms of getting to grade level mastery as an Algebra I student. And so that's what I mean when I say highly effective teachers use data to drive instruction. The data is not as important as what happens when they use the data to develop a plan. And so this allows us to have an opportunity to do that at a more granular level than the Algebra I teachers have had the ability to do. And it goes with the math curriculum that was purchased.
And this contract or whatever we're buying is for one year?
No, it is three years. It's, it's.
Not just the resources?
Yes.
And you mentioned the survey, this is strictly, this money is strictly for surveying and assessment around math curriculum?
No, the surveys are for the things I mentioned, our students. We survey them, and it's called the Gallup Student Poll. And so we look at the big pictures, our engagement and hope. And so those are broken down into different categories that Gallup associates with criteria that lead into having a certain level of engagement with your students, and the same with hope. So we look at that and break it down, and then we, each building has their own survey data. So then they're able to develop strategies. So for example, one of the first years that we took the Gallup poll, we found that there was some buildings in particular where students weren't feeling as safe as they were in past years. Now, if you look at the student Gallup poll data in terms of safety, we have made an 11% improvement. And that comes from all of the improvements that you've seen in our buildings in terms of, you know, the entries that are now secure, that, you know, using the, you know, your card to get into the building, all of those pieces that went into improving safety, you can now see that that's been helped drive up our students feeling safe. So that allows us to know if some of the strategies and things we're doing are working, and if they're not working, what is our next move? So that's the data that it provides.
Dr. Lau, I might also point out that under Every Student Succeeds Act, that replaced No Child Left Behind in, from the federal level, we are required to give cognitive and noncognitive measures. And the student survey, the Gallup Student Poll, is, it satisfies the noncognitive measure requirement under Every Student Succeeds Act. So it is important that we have a noncognitive measure in our assessment plan that does measure the non-academic things that Dr. Lau was describing.
So that could be more the emotional health side of it, maybe?
Correct.
This type of data, though, for instance, wouldn't translate over into helping make a decision whether it be to the students or whatever, per se, Mr. Gilmore's facilities department area? That is used for any type of facilities?
I don't know that it's used in playing, but it certainly lets us better understand, for example, if we're going to make safety improvements, how's that working for the students?
One of the things that I heard you say was you could do maybe a survey to taxpayers who don't have kids in the district. So maybe that could transfer over to something like facilities. So it really encompasses quite a broad spectrum, I guess, right?
Correct.
To the degree that it would help make a decision whether you run a bond again or not?
It provides information that's useful.
Okay. So it was part of the decision process, say for example, the line of bond, it was part of a little piece of?
No, but it provides information for us to continue to get information from the community, if that would be accurate, for the folks that have seen it.
Right, small piece. Usually when we want to run a survey for something like the bond, we run a specific survey, community survey for the bond. That's separate and aside from this. But the information we gather all year long from these surveys with students and that kind of give us a direction when we start talking about where we want to go with a bond or a levy.
Thank you.
There's not much limit to it then basically, right?
I'm sorry.
There's not really much limit to it then basically, right? As far as, I mean, it could, you could be talking about students, teachers, mental health, the community, the survey could.
Yes, it can cover a variety of topics.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the school district assessment and survey plan.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Foster, in a second. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. So we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. Motion passes six one with the no vote being Mr. Reader. Moving on to item K, St. Joseph's School District 21, 22 Professional Development Plan. Dr. Lau?
Yes, so I just want to back up and give you a little bit of context for the professional development plan that you see. The professional development plan that you see is developed with what we call our Professional Development Committee. And so that is comprised of 24 teachers. And each one of our buildings has a representative. And so as a result of that, they gather feedback from their buildings and the teachers within their buildings to develop plans and a focus for the district. And that is a statutory requirement, it's found in the Missouri Professional Learning Guidelines. And so we follow all of those things so that, as we develop that plan. And that plan is based on a certain amount that is, we are required to spend on professional development. So the meetings that we had this year, even though this year was difficult to meet, we had at least 11 meetings with our PDC that varied between Zoom meetings, video presentations, meeting with the executive committee because they have an executive, three of the PDC members are voted into being executive members. We had several opportunities for collaborations with the PD representatives, their administrators, and the teachers as we tried to navigate through this challenging year when it came to professional development. So as we made this plan, we were doing that in tandem while trying to carry out the planning from last year. In addition to that, since January, with regard to the plan that you have now, we have had at least 41 discussions and planning. When I look back and think of all of the times that we have met with curriculum advisors who are boots on the ground, they are with our teachers at what we call our job embedded times, our administrators, our directors that are also always out in buildings, teachers, and feedback from teachers. And so we, like I said, have had at least 41 discussions on top of all of those other meetings to develop this plan. So really, what I'd like to do now is just highlight some of the things from this plan, and some of them kind of hearken back to January of this year when we started, we usually start to develop this plan that you're seeing tonight as early as that. So last year, like I mentioned, professional development was difficult. We didn't have substitutes like we normally do. We weren't, we really couldn't get together, we couldn't get together in big groups. So we had a lot of virtual trainings, Zoom became the thing. We learned that shorter and often professional development was a better fit than some of the longer things that we've done in person over the years. So we did a lot of changing as we went. Our teachers had to learn quickly and ramp up quickly with our learning management system. They still continue to engage in the district PD, but at some point, they really, from the teacher feedback that we received and talking with our PDC committee, in January, they voted that PD could be optional for folks if they wanted to continue through the rest of the year, or they could continue. Because teachers had a lot on their plates last year, as you can only imagine. And so in light of that, when we started to build this plan and talk with them, in March, early in March, we sent out a survey and asked for PDC feedback. And so the executive committee gathered that feedback from the PD representatives. And the direction that we received was really to not abandon the things that we had set out to really focus on in 2021 because there was good learning in place, but they just didn't feel like they could give it the time and attention that they'd had in previous years. And so the direction we got was to hold steady with the initiatives. They did say we'd like to leave the math cohorts that we were working on in grades four and five because of the advent of knowing we were going to have new curriculum and knowing there'd be a lot of PD that came with that. and knowing there'd be a lot of PD that came with that curriculum. So we still have all of the videos and really great pieces of work from that, from that PD. And so we saw that as dovetailing nicely with the math curriculum implementation. So they also wanted to focus as a district, 90% approval rating, on focusing on the curriculum implementation so that they really learn the new curriculum and they really learn the new resources. And so we set out then to develop the plan for this year. The thing that makes it a little more complex than in past years, and in January, as I mentioned prior to this, we have to spend a certain amount of our 1% dollars, our PDC money that we're required to spend by the state. But districts across the state were telling the Department of Secondary and Elementary, this is really difficult this year to spend our 1% because we're having a hard time getting all of the things, initiatives that we had accomplished before COVID. And so at that time, though, in January, the state had not told us that they would waive that requirement. So the PDC approved a plan for spending that 75% from last year and going forward and spending the normal amount in 2021 and 22. So that's why the budget seems a little different than in past years because we made a plan to go ahead and not risk not getting a reimbursement back from the state. And so that is the plan that they approved and were able to review in March. And then they were able to ask questions about that plan. And then we provided frequently asked questions back to them. They met with their buildings, they met with their building administrator, they met with teachers, and they continued to provide us feedback. So the things that you're seeing, the things on this plan encompass continuing with the focus that we had set forth in 2020, 21. And then in addition, the 2021 and 22 focus, which is largely surrounds the math curriculum implementation. So the things that we'll continue with, we continue to focus on grade one reading. As our data showed us, that was an area for improvement. We'll continue to focus on the ACT. And that is part of our academic strategic plan is that we see increases in benchmark tests on the ACT. And last year, we did post an improvement in our ACT scores. And we're getting more competitive with our competitive, our comparison set. We'll continue blended learning focus. That's been very well received in our district. We'll continue with our Algebra I cohorts. As I mentioned, that dovetails nicely with what we talked about in the assessment. We'll continue our Orton-Gillingham reading focus for our interventionists as we found that we need more training at that intervention level. And so that, that particular training will continue. And we'll continue focusing on AP and pre-AP training. Pre-AP training will happen at the middle school. And then AP training will continue at the high school. We didn't have the opportunity to have AP training last year because the college board wasn't, wasn't able to stand up anything virtually as quickly as certainly our district did. So they do now have that in place. In addition, the feedback that we got from the PDC and the conversations they had with teachers in the buildings was about early out Wednesdays. And so they gave us feedback on building plans, on what we call our district days and what we call our district team days. And so we have met for quite a few hours with our curriculum advisors and directors on restructuring that plan for clarity. So buildings will have an early out plan for those Wednesdays when we release that's very specific and it'll be posted so that no teacher, doesn't know where that, that schedule is. And we'll do the same things with our district team days. We're going to identify leaders that will run those particular team days and across the different teams that we have in the district. And then on our district days, we, we look at data. And so we'll be looking at data, like I mentioned, from the assessment plan all the way to looking at the social and emotional learning that we do. And so those pieces will be in place. So we've created a plan for all of that. That's going to provide a lot of clarity because the fog of COVID did at times provide some less than clear things when it came to the early out Wednesdays. But the early out Wednesdays became very useful because we were in a read and react mode there for a little bit in terms of scaling up training for virtual. And not just in the virtual academy, but online learning for students that weren't enrolled in the virtual academy because so many kids were quarantined and the like, and our hybrid schedule. Additional changes based on feedback, the elementaries will have certain buildings that they collaborate with because they have different release times. And so we'll ensure that they better understand exactly what buildings they're going to collaborate with across grade level teams and so that that plan is clear. And we also were asked to add another level of our blended learning. And that will be, one of our curriculum advisors will help shoulder that because it's been very beneficial in terms of instruction for teachers. And we've also added an additional day for mentor training. All of our year one and year two teachers have a mentor. And we would like to continue to leverage that to support our year one and year two teachers so that retention rate with our year one and year two teachers remains high. And so we've added that to our new teacher induction system. And then in addition, we will have differentiated professional development. We typically do that with what we used to call our Engage Summit, where all of our teachers come to a centralized location. Central has been the location in the past. It's been very well received by our teachers because they develop a lot of PD that they can share their learning with each other. And based on the fact that we're not 100% clear what our new normal will be, we will be doing that at a building level. But then we'll be using our learning management system so that other teachers can share their learning across the district. And so they were very, they were very happy to see us not completely have to abandon that. And then we'll look at our new normal and what that might mean for us going forward. In addition, we're, like I mentioned, we're going to have our interventionists do some training so that our intervention level becomes more effective. And so that will continue along with some training that Mrs. Clark has certainly recommended for us so that we can exit students back out of intervention more quickly and back into the regular classroom setting. So on March 30th, like I said, they received additional feedback. April 5th, we sent out the proposals that had been refined by them. And we asked for them to vote on this plan on April 8th as per policy in our board policy GCL. And the PDC approves that plan, and they did 100%, before it comes to the board for implementation. And so that's where we are right now. So I will, that was, that was the long way around the barn. But I know a lot of you are new. And so I just wanted to make sure that you kind of had more of a context as our academic services committee has more of a context. But it is a lot to try to take in and understand how these things are developed, especially, you know, with the impact of a pandemic.
The professional development plan for our teachers is so important to success in the classroom. So wow is all I can say because that is an in-depth, probably the most in-depth I've heard in a long time. And that took a lot of work. And I appreciate how much teachers were involved in the planning of it. And so, and they've approved it, you said, 100% approved by the PDC committee. So with that said, I would entertain a motion to approve the 21, 22 Professional Development Plan.
Got a question, I think.
Yeah, I just had a question. Thank you very much. Your explanation was very detailed and very good. Thanks very much because you really laid it out for us. My, then, am I looking at this bill we're going to pay? Is it, what is the total amount? Is it $39,000 or is it $39,000 plus a whole bunch of add-ons?
Well, those are the attachments. So those are going to add up to the total. So you can see the total figure on page 10 of the plan. And so our PDC is asked to, to spend 1% of our funding formula. And so as a result of that, we are required to spend those allotments for each year. And so the total for this year would be 705,150. But that is conjunction of two years of 1% because of COVID. So we made that plan with them so that we would be in line with statutory requirements.
Because it's a state law, state statute, that 1% of your money that comes from the state is spent on professional development. You don't have a choice.
So we monitor that with the business services office because there's a lot of factors that go into what that amount might be. And so we monitor that closely with the business office and track how much we've spent in probably more than quarterly to ensure that we're getting to that number that we need to be at so that we can get, so that we are not in a position where we haven't met statutory requirements.
Okay, so 1% then, the 701, was that 700,000 or 790,000?
Oh, no, a thousand.
700,000?
Seven, yeah, 700,000. But again, that's two years.
Yeah, 700,000 and some change?
Yes.
For two years, not just?
So as those contracts come in, then we do have the ones that are, that are attached. And then the other ones that are specified throughout the plan will, will be coming in. I think there's very few left that we're still waiting on.
So again, I would entertain a motion to approve the PDC plan for 21, 22 as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Green, in a second. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. So Dr. Green made the motion. Mr. Gilmore seconded. Vote, please.
I would just like to add, great presentation, and I appreciate you taking extra time.
Yes. And, and the one thing I heard was no new initiatives. Yes!
Math.
Well, I, the math is understandable.
This professional development is totally towards the math area, right?
No, it's for everything.
Everything, okay.
Yes, everything that is in the plan.
Everything.
And the plan is an attachment that's with this. So you can see exactly what it goes for. Motion passes six, zero, with Mr. Reader being a no.
I mean, six, one?
I'm sorry, six, one. Yes, with Mr. Reader being a no. Okay, L, summer school?
Thank you. Dr. Williams and I and Mr. Clark, or Miss, Mr. Clark, sorry about that. Mrs. Clark and Mr. Milphy may chime in. But we just wanted to bring to you, as you heard in the early report, summer school enrollment is taking place. You have the numbers in front of you. As you know, we do have that contracted with Catapult Learning. That was something we had last year and they were kind enough to roll that contract into this year and not hold us accountable because of COVID last summer. So that programming is taking place. It is something that is not required for a majority of our students. There are some that it's highly recommended for if they're struggling in, in certain areas. So we hope that folks use that. Our staff have the opportunity to sign up to be teachers for that. They're professionals, supervisors, all those things take place. The question that I've gotten and am bringing to you is that, of course, we made the recommendation for masks to be required through the remainder of the school year. Based off the information we have, the number of staff that have been vaccinated, what we're hearing from some of the people in the community, we know we're going to hear pluses and minuses on both sides of that. You know, we have said from the administrative side of things that we feel like it'd be an opportunity to do optional masks for our students and our staff during summer school. There's, of course, multiple questions around that. If a student gets COVID, do they then lose the incentive that Catapult has in place? No, they could, they could go to the online coursework and we're going through that. If a staff member gets COVID, there are not sickly days for summer. It's handled the same way every other summer program is handled. So we would continue to do that. And so we had that discussion administratively. We still feel like it would be a good opportunity because I don't know that there's ever a perfect opportunity to do that but to give our students and our staff the opportunity to have optional masks during summer school. So I guess the question for you is, if you don't feel that way, we need to know that from you as a board. That's what we've shared with staff. We've shared in, in articles that that's what we were planning to do because I felt it was beneficial to give people a heads up that that's what we were leaning toward. But I also don't want to get the ship too far down the river if we're going to make some adjustments. And so we still have time. Beautiful board feels that you don't want to have optional mask during summer school to make that adjustment. And that's really what I'm asking from you right now is if you don't feel it should be optional, that you let us know if you feel it's fine to be optional. We can do that with the understanding that if the data shows that we need to do something different, just like everything else COVID-related, we would make an adjustment if we needed to.
So are you looking for a vote, Dr. Van Zoet? Are you looking for consensus?
I'm looking for a vote from you to be able to say that you are okay with summer school being mask optional or if you're not.
I would make a motion that masks be optional for summer school for both staff and students.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Williams?
Are parents able to change their option of in-person to virtual if this changes into optional mask?
Yeah. And that's part of the reason we tried to get out in front of it a little bit saying our, we're leaning towards optional mask so that people could enroll with that understanding. We would have the same question, I think, the other way. If you choose to go required, it would probably impact some of our parents and students that won't want to. So, you know, there's going to be some on each side of that. So they have the ability to make that adjustment still if they need to. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Right.
Any other comments or questions? Don, are we going to need to do this? Can we vote electronically for this? Okay. You're not seeing any? I would call for the vote.
Who made the?
I made the motion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I got it right.
So motion passes five yes, one no, Ms. Williams, and one abstention, Mr. Reader. Okay, moving on to agenda item number nine, future meetings and events. May 3rd is a Board of Education, Missouri School Board's training here. From 4:30 to 8:30, I'm assuming we're going to have it here in the boardroom? Is that correct? Okay. And that is not an optional training, so I certainly hope all of our board members can be here. May 4th at 3 o'clock is our academic committee meeting. May 12th at 2 o'clock is our policy committee meeting. May 17th at 1 o'clock is our finance committee meeting. May 18th at 2 o'clock is a facility committee meeting. And while we're talking about those meetings, I would just like to let both our staff and the public know that anyone who asks to be a part of either the finance or the facility committee, we're granted an invitation to join. And we have a great representation, I feel, over all the, all areas of our community. And so I'm excited to have those meetings come together and to get those organized. May 23rd at 1 o'clock is graduation. Lafayette will be at Krug Park, Bitten on the football field, and Central at Missouri Western Spratt Stadium. Adding into this, May 24th at 4:30 will be a work session for the board. Wes Simmons will be presenting 3D, which the 3D Institute is something we adopted last month, hopefully to help build climate and culture, both with our coaching staff and our teaching staff as we move into next and our teaching staff, as we move into next year. So that is a work session at 4:30 prior to the board meeting at 5:30. And both of those will be here in the boardroom. May 27th is the last day of school. May 31st, the district will be closed for the holiday. So I would entertain a motion to move to executive session.
I move, make a motion to move to executive session pursuant to 6-1, 0.021, closed meetings and closed records for 1, legal, 3, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees, and 13 individually identifiable personnel records.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
And that motion passes 7-0. So I would ask our board members, let's take about a five-minute break, since it is already about 8 o'clock. Return back in here for executive session. And for those of you who came, thank you for being here this evening.